I would like to call this January 11th, 2021 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the roll call, I'll ask that Mayor Hamwell would like to make a statement and have a moment of silence. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 3rd, Don Simmons passed away at the age of 90. Don was raised in Granger Township, was a U.S. Army veteran of the Korean War. His father and three brothers in construction started the firm of Gay Simmons &amp; Sons. And when Gay retired in 1959, he, Don, and his brother Harold formed Simmons Brothers Building Contractor, which later became Simmons Brothers Construction here in our city. They were instrumental in many of the industrial buildings on our Lake Road and West Smith Road, as well as Progress Industrial Park and Portside Corporate Park out next to Medina Airport. In 1960, Don began his lifelong love of community service by being elected share and township trustee, where he rose to be the president of the Ohio State Association of Township Trustees and Clerks. He served as Medina County Commissioner from 1973 to 77, at which time he also served as president of the of NOAACA. He was the past chairman of the Medina County Republican Party for 13 years and chairman of the Medina County Board of Elections. He was an active member and past president of the Medina Area Chamber of Commerce and was inducted into its Hall of Fame in 1996. He was a founding member and charter class graduate of Leadership Medina County, and in 2006 received its Excellent in Medina County Leadership Award. He was also a founding member of the Medina County Economic Development Corporation, and in 2006, he was awarded the Medina County Economic Development Committee's Lifetime Achievement Award, and in 2019, its Outstanding Community Advocate Award. He retired from the Board of Directors for County Economic Development in 2018. I'd respectfully ask for a moment of silence in honor of Don Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb. Rose.
Here.
Fields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coine.
Here.
Hazelton.
Present.
Hefinger.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes is prepared and submitted by the clerk for the regular meeting of December 14th, 2020, the special council meeting of December 30th, 2020, and the organizational meeting of January 6th, 2021 be approved.
Second. Discussion on the approval of the minutes. The clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yeah.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and discussed several items. We will meet again in two weeks. Health, safety, and sanitation. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this time. I was going to hold a meeting in the latter part of this month, but after thought, I probably will hold off until we have a new fire chief in place and that person has time to get acclimated to their new position and we'll hold one then. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Water Utilities, Mrs. Hazelton.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm working with Keith to get a meeting scheduled here soon to discuss the software that the city uses for financing, in particular to the budgets.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. 21001, 2021 property tax advances, 21002, 2021 membership renewal to Main Street Medina, 21003 expenditure over 15,000, the SIPCA Architect Building Department, 21004 expenditure over 15,000 for Duber Architectural Building Department, 21005 expenditure over 15,000, Vance's Law Enforcement for the Police, 21006 expenditure of 15,000 Board of Building Standards Building, 21007 approved application accept funding for BWC Body Armor Program for the Police, 21008 expenditure for computer aided dispatch report system for the police, 2109 discussion for VIP budgeting software for 2022 budgeting process, and 2010 replat of city parking deck property. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome council back after the holidays. As the public can see, the council meeting space has been renovated by filling in the former pit that was here and making it all one level now with the City Hall floor, as well as we have a new HVAC unit, boilers upstairs, three new boilers, and an air mover on the roof that was badly in need of replacement. I'd like to thank particularly Nino, Dan Gladish, and Patrick for getting both of these projects done in about a six to seven week period. There are still some small items to be accomplished yet, but overall, it's usable and much improved. COVID-19 Medina County remains in the red level. December 2020, we had the most COVID deaths in the county since the pandemic began. We'd like to remain vigilant with avoiding large gatherings, wearing masks in public, washing hands frequently, and social distancing. Updated information on business openings, safety protocol, et cetera on the city and Medina County Health Department's website. Recent health advisory by both our local health commissioner and the governor continued the recommendation to remain at home from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. This is through the end of January. Employment, healthcare, caring for others or pets, obtaining groceries or other essentials are permitted exceptions. Fiber to the home, we're encouraging residents to take a survey at the link www dot medina dot litcommunities dot net. By permitting fiber to be run through our neighborhoods, this would permit some competition that is lacking at this point. You may have noticed that the Christmas lights are still on on January 11th, and it's been requested that we keep them on until February 22nd. January and early February is to honor the first responders, healthcare workers, and in remembrance of those we've lost as a result of COVID. February 19th through 22nd will be to coincide with our annual ICE festival, which is planned for those dates. The Martin Luther King Celebration is being organized by a number of local pastors. It will be Monday on Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 18th at 7:00 p.m. at Cornerstone Chapel. There'll be limited space available. Masks will be required, but it will also be available on Facebook and Zoom, and that information will be shared with the local churches for anybody that wants to attend remotely. And then last but not least, January 24th to 30th is considered School Choice Week in Medina. I issued a proclamation to honor the choices of public schools, private schools, homeschooling, and open enrollment opportunities in our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been recently approached by two of the council members regarding constituency inquiries about the potential for civil unrest due to the events that we've seen in D.C. over the past several days. I have not received any intelligence or information from Homeland Security or the FBI regarding any protests in Medina. It's important to know that if protests do materialize here in Medina, we have procedures in place to address that, similar to the protests we had this summer. Those procedures include staffing up Medina officers as well as using our mutual aid agreements with neighboring departments. But again, we don't have any specific intelligence to this date about Medina or any type of protests that we would be having in Medina here in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a couple items on the agenda that originated with finance, and I will address those when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, is he still there? Building official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Thank you. Mr. McCollough, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to take a minute and acknowledge our employee, Bill Davis, and wish him well in his retirement. Bill's been with the city since 1991, and he worked in several departments such as vehicle maintenance, engineering, and we promoted him to the street foreman in 2012. In 2014, Bill was promoted to the street superintendent in charge of the street department until his retirement this last December 31st of 2020. Bill's been great to work with, and he's always had the city's best interest, you know, at heart in his work ethic. So I want to wish him well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let council and the public know that the City Hall Storm Sewer and Detention Basin Project is out to bid. We will receive and open bids on January 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruraly Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two updates. Did want to just let the public know that we completed a CARES funding project in the Parks Department. We upgraded all of our permanent public restroom facilities with touchless sinks, hand dryers, and toilets. So looking forward to that once the season comes around. Update from the Medina Community Recreation Center. We have a variety of programs that are getting started as of today. Our youth basketball program has started, so Open Gym will be closed after 2:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday moving forward. We do have spin classes which are going to start this Wednesday evening at 5:30 and Saturday mornings at 8:15. Registrations are still available for those. We have also opened registration for the Community Wellness Project, which is a 12-week virtual wellness program focused on effective wellness foundations and techniques. That program is slated to begin January 19th with the possibility of a one week later start depending on registration numbers. The cost for that's $20 for members and $35 for non-members. We also are in the process of rolling out our virtual page on the Rec Center's website. We're working to implement more virtual programs, including Zoom registrations for Silver Sneakers programs, specifically meditation, and rolling it out even further as we develop it. We have made some changes to the leisure pool area. Our water slide is open Saturdays and Sundays, January 4th through January 31st, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There are restrictions on the number of people that we're allowed to let in per the Health Department regulations, so we will continue to update Facebook when the capacity is met. We actually were at capacity on this past Saturday. I would also like to extend an invite to those former members at the Rec Center, current members who may not feel comfortable to visit yet, and the public. If you've ever thought of joining the Rec Center, I would invite you to check out our Facebook page. Come to the facility to see it for yourself. There's many changes in place as we've moved equipment to accommodate social distancing and make it as safe as possible for the patrons. Our hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sunday. Be sure to like our Facebook page or check out the website at medinarec.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that I missed that's in the audience? Jared Frye, can you just give a little update, if you would, on the new audio visual that we have on the rotunda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we have a new setup now and getting our first look at that here this evening. This will now be used for multipurpose. We can use it, as you see now, for remote meetings. So if department heads need to do remote meetings from the rotunda, that can be accomplished in the spacing provided and keep the social distancing right now. And then once we get back into normal operating mode, there'll be good ways for us to do presentations now visually that we weren't able to do before in terms of PowerPoints, videos, things of that nature with either council presenting, department heads presenting, or anyone from the public. So a lot of new technology. We're anxious to slowly get it in piece by piece and get it going, but so far, so good, and we like the look of it on TV and on Facebook as well.
Thank you, and I think it's a great thing to happen. I think the dual screens that we have at City Hall are very helpful for these remote meetings and for the presentations, for sure. Next, we have a motion by council to authorize a designee for public records training. At this time, it entertain a motion to designate the Clerk of Council Kathy Patton to act as the mayor and council's designee to attend public records training as required by Section 14943 and 10943 of the Ohio Vice Code.
I will make a motion to recommend that Kathy Patton be designated as the mayor and council's designee for public records training?
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion?
Fields.
Yes.
Fields. Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notices, communications, petitions, there's non-affinist business and non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue concerned which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at Chair in a reasonable timeline and approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear left microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? There's not. I have one request that came in earlier today, and I'll read it. The request is as follows. It's addressed to John Coine, President of Medina City Council. Dear President Coine, the proposal to move the Medina Municipal Court to the 1969 County Courthouse is ill-advised and a waste of taxpayers' money. There's only 12,300 square feet of available space in the 1969 courthouse. This is based upon the County Commissioner's January 5th statement that the 1969 courthouse has 14,600 square feet that is not public space. However, that square footage figure includes the county law library that occupies 2,300 square feet. The total square footage with the public space is 22,400, much less than the municipal court desired 27,000 square footage. The current unanimous board occupies 13,500 square feet. That is 1,200 square feet more than the space that is available in the 1969 courthouse. For the city man to spend any money to head the municipal court with substantially less space than the court currently occupies is a waste of taxpayers' money. Such a move will also exacerbate the municipal's purported problem of not having adequate space. I encourage the city to evaluate expanding the current municipal court building now that there is a city parking garage rather than relocating the court and constructing an entirely new courthouse, respectively, Bat Walker 523 East Friendship, Medina, Ohio 44256. I have one clarification about the facts in this statement, just to be clear for everybody. We contacted the county commissioners today and asked a question of what is the square footage in the 1969 building. We were advised that third floor has 9,600 square feet, the second floor has 9,600 square feet, and the basement has 9,600 square feet, of which 2,300 square feet is occupied by the law library, which leaves 7,300 square feet. Taking all those square footages into consideration, which are both public and private, there is 26,500 square feet of space in the 1969 courthouse. As you recall, we were looking at about 27,000 square feet for the joint project with the county and new space. So we are very close to that number. We're still evaluating as a 26,500 square feet would be adequate. Some of the square feet could be used elsewhere for storage of records, and we do not have a common entry, which was the secured entry, which would still be in the new building, so that space could be eliminated. So based on the figures we have right now, it still may be a viable option, and we will make the determination, of course, prior to the filing deadline of February 3rd. But some of the information provided, I'm not sure where the information came from, or if the information was just incorrectly obtained or something by the county, but we double-checked it today, and the numbers, again, were 9,600 square feet on the third floor, 9,600 square feet on the second floor, and 9,600 square feet in the basement, of which that 9,600, 2,300 is occupied by the law library. So there is adequate space for us to move forward, and we were going to look at that a little bit more closely to make a determination. So I just wanted to clarify some factual information on that issue. And again, the second part of it talks about building another court next to the parking deck. Again, if everybody recalls, I think we went through that twice, and we had quotes to obtain to build a new courthouse and/or renovate a new courthouse, and it was going to need taxpayers more money to do that than what we're evaluating currently. So we'll just keep evaluating the best options for the taxpayer, because that is what we're elected to do. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council, or is there anything else on Facebook that we need to address? Nope. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, it entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 121, ordinance 221, ordinance 321, ordinance 421, and resolution 521.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Sorry. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion to suspend the rules?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordinance 121, an ordinance amending Section 13301 of the classified ordinances of the city Medina, Ohio, relative to fire department association memberships.
Move to approve.
Discussion? Mayor Hamwell, is this you?
Yes, sir. So we've had a person that's been trained in the emergency vehicle technician in our vehicle maintenance department, and it's my understanding from Chief Painter that before, just by having the certification, you were automatically a member of this, and now the Ohio Association has decided to charge fees, which then requires us to have it listed on the membership as well as have council authorize it. So we're simply asking for council's approval to continue the membership and pay the fees for this.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 1-21 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 2-21, ordinance authorizing expenditure not to exceed $66,500 to Epic Aviation LLC for the purchase of Jet A Fuel at Medina Municipal Air Court.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to purchase fuel. The fuel is then resold and usually at a profit. We may have to come back for additional funds because we never know what fuel is going to cost, so if it goes up, we would have to come back. But that generally isn't an issue because the price we charge for selling it would go up as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hazelton? Thank you. Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coine?
Yes.
Ordinance 221 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 321, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2021 Ford Explorer from Lebanon Ford for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Discussion? Chief Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for one marked patrol vehicle.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Ordinance 321 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 421, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2020 Dodge Journey front-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle from Fred Martin Superstore for the zoning and property maintenance inspection department.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Discussion? Is this Mr. Mendel or Mr. Gladish?
It's Dan. This is the purchase to replace a 10-year-old Ford Escape for the Property Maintenance Zoning Inspection Department.
Okay. Any questions? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 421 passes 7-0.
Resolution 521, a resolution requesting the county order to make tax advances during the year 2021 pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code Section 302134.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
Second.
All right, Jenny.
Second.
All right. Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, we have to formally request this in order to get these advances, the emergency clauses, because in order to get the first payment, we need to have this take effect immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Fields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yeah.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
521 passes 7-0.
All right. Council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just start out by saying OH.
Hi-O.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations to our beloved Cleveland Browns for their victory last night. I wasn't willing to leave the television.
I was 10 years old when President Kennedy got assassinated, and I remember being so fearful. I mean, I was young and I didn't understand what was going on, and I knew that our, just by what people were saying pro and con against assassination, believe it or not, that it scared me, and it stuck with me for a long time. I had that same feeling last week. It really bothered me to watch the news. I couldn't pull myself away from it, and I know our country in the last couple months has, well, longer than that, but especially the last couple months, has been going through a trying time. These type of actions are unacceptable. Our republic is so fragile. It always has been fragile, and we have to work together to keep the republic. I hope that the people that instigated the insurrection are prosecuted to the fullest extent. I pray for the people that were injured, the police officer, the Capitol Police Officer that lost his life, and as Homeland Security, National Security, and FBI has warned that on January 20th, that almost every state cap will have, there's already word that protesting is going to happen, and it's going to be armed protesting. In the state of Ohio, like the chief has said, we have open carry, but that just frightens me. I hope and pray that, you know, the generation that's coming up, that's following most of us, you know, it'd be two generations following me, but for most of you on this dais, that the next generation is not going to be so hateful. And, you know, people, you know, say in jest that I always say, you know, be kind to one another. It's just as simple as that. Doesn't matter what your political affiliation is. If you didn't like the outcome of the election in four years, you can vote for whoever you want to. And I'm proud that some of the CEOs of some of the largest companies around the country has decided that as long as this incorrect fact-finding measure is going on by some people, that this is illegitimate election, as long as that continues, that there will no longer support candidates that are going to run for office, national and state candidates going to run for office in the future, as long as they keep promoting this, and that, you know, money does talk. So hopefully, some of this will change. For the people that are still promoting that this was a false election, I feel bad for our local election boards, you know, as people work so hard at the polling places. It's unfair, and it needs to stop. So I'll get off my high horse now, but I just be kind to one another. That's all I want to say. And for our local police, the state police, the National Guard, the Capitol Police, protect yourself, be vigilant, and our thoughts and prayers will be with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Anybody else have council comments?
Mr. President? No, go ahead. Let just...
Mrs. Hazel Time?
You always do that to people. No, I just wanted to kind of echo off of what Denny said. There has been such a political divide in this country, always, but it seems to be worsening over the last few years, and it just makes me thankful to serve on a nonpartisan council where everyone is able to put those things aside, and we get things done for the good of the city. So I am very thankful for that. And I just want to let everybody at home know that now that we have these new monitors where we can, like, see ourselves, suddenly everything on you becomes very itchy. You feel the constant urge to yawn. So just so everyone at home knows, it's different when you're up on that big screen. We don't have to watch ourselves when we're normally telephoned. But again, trying not to repeat myself this year, that's my New Year's resolution. I am thankful that we are able to accomplish things like we do on our city level.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and welcome back.